He's still on call, Rusty?
Yeah.
Anthony's on call?
Yep.
He may be on call.
We're on call from eight four seven.
Well, I seen him go through in the truck.
Do what?
I seen him go through the gas truck.
Yeah, he's been with the late survey guy. And he starts at seven in the morning and works till five. So that's probably why he's running late. Are you telling me when you saw me?
Okay, we got Todd.
Anthony's trying to get on now.
Oh, good.
And I've got the forty-nine counties recording now.
Okay. Who is, uh, who's gonna be, who's turned his prayer or going to pray?
Anthony's. I believe I prayed last time, yeah. Is my, is my microphone on, Angie?
Mm-hmm. There, yeah, now we got it.
Anthony, on?
Stayed on, Anthony, can you hear us?
Go now, right? Oh, internet?
We can't.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off on the phone there.
And Jimmy is on my phone.
I can't hear nobody.
You, you, you can't hear me?
I barely can.
Turn your, turn your, turn your volume up on your phone.
It's wide open. Wide open, but it's not coming in.
Can you hear me any better?
I can't hardly hear nobody. Where, where would that button be? Or somewhere?
On the side of your phone.
You, oh, Anthony, you wanna go ahead and lead us in prayer?
He just, he just went away and he's muted.
I think he went away, that's, I think they pushed her off, but. You're back on.
You should have set it up when you first.
Can you hear me now, Anthony?
No, hold on just a minute. It's wide open.
It, it would have been when you first got on there, you should have put something.
Yeah, I'm afraid you didn't choose phone audio, you didn't.
They didn't.
I didn't, so what did I need to do to do that?
You, just, just, you need, you can leave the meeting and then come back and when you sign on, choose that audio button too.
All right.
Video and audio.
Give me just a minute.
Yeah, you gotta make two choices, a video choice and an audio choice.
I thought he done that, I was hoping him go through it. I thought you done that, Anthony, is he still on there?
No.
No, I think he's signing back.
That's your parakeet, Rusty?
It must be Tim's.
What's that?
That parakeet.
Are they one holler? I hear a bird holler and you may hear that.
Mm-hmm. Tim, where are you?
I'm on that back porch patio.
Okay. I thought you must be outside, you got that wind blowing, look, I see your hair flying.
Yeah, yeah. My hair, as long as it's been in a long time. I got this, I got, I told you, seen you a while ago, I got some kinda little, I call it a duct.
All right.
Can you hear us now better?
Yeah, Myra got you here.
You wanna go ahead, you wanna go ahead and lead us in prayer, Anthony?
Yeah. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for everyone here tonight. Lord, please guide us through this council meeting. May your will be done, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Do the pledge.
I pledge.
One nation under God. The liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we, I don't know if it's got any better or not, but it's still good.
We may just have to mute all the microphones except one.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody ordered mute, yeah. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Winfield City Council meeting, first meeting in May, May the fifth. I hope everybody's doing well. As far as the economy go, I think we're still doing pretty okay in the city, as far as the economy goes. I believe it actually might be a little higher than what it normally was this time last year, it's hard to believe, but I think, uh, the money that government been passing around has, uh, made a big difference in, uh, people being able to spend and buy things that they hadn't been able to do. But I hope, uh, we keep people in prayer, it's got, uh, thickness and keep remembering that this thing is not out of the, we're not out of the woods with it yet. Uh, we need to be with the governor, prayer, prayer with our governor, praying for the governor, prayer for the United States. Seen it in Congress as they pass laws to try to, uh, get us through this tough time. You know, the governor, they've got, they've gone, we've got schools, school issues, graduation issue, different things like that, and there's a lot of things considered during this time, so we need to keep all those, all those people in our prayers. Uh, the first item on the agenda, approving minutes from the April twenty-first, twenty twenty council meeting, I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes if nobody's got any question or comment, whether they're written.
I'll make that question.
Yeah, stack it.
Jimmy, second.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, we got the CD renewal, uh, number C D five six oh three one, it's a twenty thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cent. We put that out for bid with all the local banks. We've got them turned in here, the first one that I've got, First State Bank of the South. Their bid, interest rate up for six months is point three oh. And interest rate for twelve months is point, interest rate for, uh, twelve months is four point four oh. Point three oh for six and point four oh for twelve, that's First State Bank. Next, the next bid I've got is on Citizen Bank of Winfield. Their, their interest rate for six months is point seven eight. Point seven eight. And then straight for twelve months is one point oh five, that's Citizen Bank of Winfield. And then the next one I've got is on State Bank Trust of Winfield. Theirs for six months is one percent and the interest rate for twelve months is one point one oh. So it looks like State Bank, you know, on the six months or the year, either one is the highest, highest bid on those, on those, on that CD. Got a recommendation, go with State Bank? Can I get a second?
Um, second?
Uh, you wanna go for six months or twelve months? Everybody okay with?
What did he say?
He, he said he'd like to go for six, he's hoping the rates will go up in a year, in the, at the end of the year.
Okay, yeah. I'll say that.
Uh, we had a motion, a second, all in favor, go six months for State Bank Trust? You got that, Anthony? Let's see, what else, next item? All right, next item on the agenda is resolution number twelve fifty-seven, twenty twenty, that's back to school tax holiday, sales tax holiday. We, we've, in the past, we've always acknowledged this holiday, sales tax holiday for back to school. Uh, we're really, like I said, in our opening statements there, we're not really sure how school's gonna be or whatever, but I think that, uh, it would be, you know, I think we've gotta go ahead and do this, it's for the weekend of July the seventeenth through the nineteenth. It's when the college tax, sales tax holiday is. I think it'd be in our best interest to go ahead and, and we'll go ahead and, you know, pass this resolution to acknowledge this as a sales tax holiday for school, back to school holiday, tax holiday.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Well, Mayor, let me, let me say this, I, I think that, that one of the reasons we need to go, I, I know we've already done this, but, uh, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have to have sixty days notice, don't they?
They do.
Okay, so we, we don't know yet whether we're gonna go back to school, but we can't wait until we, I, I'm just trying to explain, we can't wait until we do to do this, cause they've gotta have so much advance notice.
Right.
Okay.
All right. All right, on this next one, as everybody, I think everybody should have a copy of this in their folder, on this next item on the agenda is resolution number twelve fifty-eight, the E service contract. Y'all familiar with that contractor, have looked over what that contract is as far as the grant?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, I, we've, I think everybody's probably, I'm not sure exactly what all was in y'all's packets, as far as that goes on the, uh, what's in that. Thing, what, what, what grants we have received from this contract that we've been with these. Did you, did they get a copy of that, Angie, as well?
Maybe, it, it right, it looks like this.
I need to know what y'all thought, as, uh, I'm gonna call it reopen or renewing this contract with E service on the, uh, they, on these grants that, that's available for different departments in the city. I think the fire department has, has received grants from it and the parks received grants from it, it wouldn't, uh, I think most of the grants that, that were sent over to pastime was not anything that they could use, and Regina's got a grant system set up, uh, for the state of Alabama, I think, that, that, that they wouldn't, that they could use in the library, so might be the fire and the, uh, the park.
I'll make the motion when we renew it.
You in the, you in the favor of renewing, has anybody else got any comment or?
No, I mean, I think it's been beneficial to us, looks like, from what I've read here, so yeah, I'm, I'm with Anthony, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it as well.
Well, we've got eight thousand and then the parks got two at three thousand apiece, the way I read this. Is that correct?
That's what they reported to me.
That's right. So we got a motion from Anthony and second from Chris. All in favor to, to go back in contract with this E service? Okay. Then, the next item on the agenda is accounts payable. Anybody got any questions or comments on the accounts payable list that's in there? If not, I need to ask for a motion to pay those bills.
I'll second it.
Motion, second, all in favor? There again, you know, we're still limited, we've, we've been trying to keep limited what we've put on the agenda. I've got, I have had, I have had, uh, two couple of companies come through and look at these areas that we've got, that we're having, uh, water problems when it comes to these big rains, and, uh, I should have, have all those turned in by the next county, I feel like I'll have them before then. I may reach out to y'all and kinda get your thoughts, let you be thinking on, uh, I told you I was gonna get two or three different contractors to kinda get a deal over there on Regal Street and Midway Drive, around, uh, Cherokee. Well, I, I think that's Berry, actually Berry and then turns into Cherokee, actually, on Berry, uh, I had, did have the county commission to come down, county commissioners, engineer Mike Paul come down, look at this one over here on Berry. Uh, he recommend that either going back another forty-eight inch cupboard beside that one, or going with a flat sixty-six inch, a flat sixty-six inch cupboard. So I'm going to, I'm, I've got, I'm giving this to different contractors, let them kinda give us an idea of what it would cost, and I think instead of building, like if y'all have noticed this one down here on Midway, one toward Continental, if you will get a chance to look at it, if you haven't, one of the issues is on the outlet side, where we've got the water and sewer hanging there with that, that's, that's gonna be a little bit of a, uh, I mean, for us fixing that, extending it out, because we don't have no shoulder there, uh, that's gonna be a little bit of a problem there, the head wall all on the inlet side. And I, I, my opinion, it's a whole lot less money, I think would be better to, to rip route, though, rip route the, uh, entrance and out on that, on that cupboard, when we do do any, I've got them to figure it, instead of building concrete head wall, cause there's no shoulder there really to hold it. And the dirt that's there is not really too good a dirt. I mean, it's, it's, it's just what I call bad dirt.
Sure.
If y'all wanna look, you know, kinda, I'll, I'll be back in touch, we, uh, I've met with them two different times, but we'll get some price, see if we can't get these, these projects underway when it, since the weather's starting to break a little bit. But that's really all I got outside the normal, uh, everything's been going pretty well. I would, I'd kinda like to, we had an incident yesterday, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, uh, I was going to bring this up and kinda let Todd do a little research and see if we had anything in place, what, you know, there again, I, I, I don't like taking on a whole lot of new business without us being in a, uh, open session together, just cause it's a little bit, but we, I think we may have to get used to this, it's kinda being the new norm for a little bit. Whether we like it or not, you know, and everything, everybody else is kinda adapting to it, and it may be the way we have to start trying to handle different things. Uh, but, but, are y'all all aware of what happened down here at the main red light yesterday? Or is any, any of, is any of you aware of it?
I'm not.
Are you aware of it, Todd?
I, I, I saw you speaking with a couple down there, I guess that's what you're talking about.
It is, uh, you know, and you never, you know, we never think about certain things until it happens to us. I, I know y'all have been in bigger cities and things has happened, when you've come up and you come up, and these people standing there with a sign, kinda more or less, uh, asking for help, you know, or some, some what, begging or whatever with a sign, you know, uh, wanting help, but we had that happen here yesterday at the main red light. I come up, spoke with the people, they were coming, they were in, they had been to Florida and they were headed back to California, and they claimed they didn't have enough money to get back home on. Said they had to spend all their money on the van, getting it fixed, because it had broke down, I asked, you know, I kinda got personal a little bit about it, I wanted, oh, you know, if I don't mind helping somebody, but I don't know this yet, uh, the, the bad thing about it was, it's a man and a wife, and a, probably to be about a six, about a seven, six, seven month old baby. They were all standing at the corner with that, with a sign stating that they were needing, needing gas money to get home on, and they were headed back to California. They said they spent all the money on the van, getting it fixed, and I asked them if they had that receipt, cause they claimed they spent fourteen hundred dollars or something, but I said they had that receipt or whatever. They didn't have, it was a small mom pop shop, they didn't get a receipt. Well, you know, so, long story short, I kinda asked them, I said, how long you planning on being out here? And I said, we don't normally experience people sitting here, and I said, if we allow this, this is gonna be an ongoing thing, I'm afraid, and we don't, we don't normally allow stuff like this to happen, you know? Really wasn't sure what they're right for, for as being able to stand on our corner and beg for money. Uh, but I, I do have a problem with it here in Mayberry, you know, because I'm not used to it. But, uh, but I told them, I said, what's to keep y'all from going to the next town and doing this thing all the way back to California? We need, he told me the amount of money that he needed, whatever, well, one of the churches, I mean, there were people stopping and helping them, because this is a community that is concerned about people in need. And I understand that, but there's different, there's other ways about going about it, instead of standing at the main red light, trying to, uh, you know, used to, back in the day, we had the volunteer fire stand out with buckets on Sunday, church, you know, catch people through, and they'd throw their pennies in there for that or whatever. But I want y'all to kinda consider what we wanna allow and don't wanna allow, or Todd can look, see if we even allow stuff like that, or legally, if we can't, if there's anything that we can do for that. But it wasn't, the church, one of the churches come by and picked them up, took to the church or whatever, I won't think it was, it didn't seem like, way time flies, didn't seem like forty or forty-five minutes later, I got a picture sent to me that is standing Hamilton, on the side, on the street corner, Hamilton, with the same sign. I mean, I, you know, you know, I told them within an hour, they need to be, they need to go ahead and try to leave. So Todd kind of, kind of, kind of elaborated a little bit on that, what's allowed, not allowed, or is anything that you can do for situations like that.
Well, Mayor, I will have to look, but I, I do know that we have some, we have some ordinances that prevent panhandling and, you know, things like that, they're older ordinances, and I'll have to go back and look, but you can, uh, prevent that. But the, the real problem is, you got, you, if they're in a public location, in, in a public place, uh, it, it's really hard to tell them they can't be there, what you can tell them that they, they must move on. I, I, I don't think, I, I think you can prevent them from camping out on the street corner, right there at the main red light, and, and doing that. But if they're just walking through town, just passing through town with a sign, and they're moving through, I don't think you can necessarily prevent them from, from displaying their side and asking for help. But you can, as I recall, we can probably prevent them from sitting up shop in one location, just hanging out there.
Yeah, yeah, we've had them come through, you know, before, on motorcycles or wa, I mean motorcycles, and bicycles and different things, walking through, and then, you know, I don't see where that could be an issue. But I, I do see the word, that if, if it is allowed, that it become an issue when you're standing on the street corner. I mean, uh, you know, we have had, back in the day, I know everybody that's been in Winfield, lived here as long as I have, and I know you do, Todd, remember, we've had people kinda, you know, stand on the corner and, uh, sing gospel music, things, and, uh, cite Bible verses and different things. Uh, I just kinda, I, you know, it's just, it's just, I don't know, I guess, I guess, kinda not ready for my city, the city that I'm in, to be, uh, where we see that every day.
Well, I, I, I think that, that one of the ways you address that, Mayor, is that, uh, it's a, it creates a hazard, especially at that location, because, uh, if, I mean, what, what's gonna happen is, is if somebody pulls up at the red light and, and hands a dollar bill out to them, are they gonna walk out into the highway? And is it gonna, are people gonna stop to try to go over there to help them? So I, I think that certain locations are easier than others, uh, to prevent them from just hanging out there, uh, and assembling there, but, uh, it, it's because of the type of society we live in, uh, it, it's, it's gonna be hard just to prevent them from just passing through, I guess, was what I'm saying, but the, the, the thing that we need to do is if we see that, we need to send them to our local churches, because I, I, I do know that our churches have a, uh, they, they, most all the churches participate in a fund, uh, that, uh, they give vouchers for, uh, power bills and for groceries and things like that, they give out a voucher, instead of giving money, they actually give vouchers that you can go to a store and buy groceries. For example, we got, we got away from giving away cash, because somebody said they needed fifty dollars for gas, and then, uh, you see them, somebody sees them in the liquor store. You know, uh, well, if they need fifty dollars for gas, we, we, our, our ministerial association's got vouchers, they can give them a voucher for twenty-five dollars for gas at a gas station. They don't give them the money, they can't use it on anything but gas at a gas station, they need a room for the night, they can give a hotel voucher. They need groceries, they get a grocery store voucher where they go buy groceries, that kinda thing. But I, I think we can prevent, to some extent, to a large extent, we can prevent them from sitting up shop like those we're doing on the, on the street corner. We can, we can prevent that from happening.
Okay, yeah, cause it, it, right there where it was at, it was, it was, it, I could see real quick, like, where it could, could be, be a problem, cause we had several people pulling in, you know, which they did pull in City Hall parking lot and walked back out there to them. But there again, we're supposed to be social distance, and, and I mean, I, I, you know, tried to keep my distance, when of course the guy wouldn't shake my hand right when I come up, I had no problem with that, but you know, uh, I'm kinda hard here, and anyway, and had to get a little close to kinda understand what he was saying, different things, but I just wanted to, you know, bring that to light, cause I wasn't sure if anybody, if everybody, uh, seen it or knew about it or whatever, but I think we're gonna start seeing more and more different things like that, and I think what's happening with the country right now is just a taste of what we've got there, or that we are gonna see, and I just kinda think that we need to be prepared, how we're gonna handle everything as it comes about, because there's no doubt that this community is a caring community and a giving community, and that, I don't think there's not very many that wouldn't try to help them, I mean, of course, you know, it always looks more sympathetic when they're holding a six month old baby out there and at eighty something degrees, and I told them, I said, within about an hour is all you're gonna need to be out here anyway with that young child. But anyway, uh, that's kinda all, only, the only thing that I've got that I wanted to discuss that wasn't on the agenda. Just to kinda, kinda tell you what, that, you know, we got things that's gonna keep happening over the course of, uh, the next few months, especially till we see how this, this is gonna play out.
Well, I'll, Mayor, I'll look back at some of the ordinances we've got and, and do a little research on, and, and see if we've got anything that addresses that, and, you know, and if, if we don't, or I, I, I'm quite sure we do, but if we need to update it or do some work to it, uh, we, we can do that.
Okay.
We just haven't seen, we hadn't seen much of that in Winfield, so, and, and you're right, we're probably gonna see more, so we need to be prepared for it.
Yeah, I do, I agree. I think, uh, uh, you know, we need to remember, we need to constantly remember our first responders, our police and our fire, our healthcare workers, our, in, in our clinics, uh, the local clinics that we've got, you know, different, uh, doctors' offices or whatever, because, uh, you know, they're essential and they're doing their job, and then we need to acknowledge what they're having to go through, for us being able to go through and go home with being around different people all day and different things, and we need to, uh, try to oblige, you know, and, uh, try to aid them in any way we can, and I think the city's doing, uh, doing a, a real good job, uh, for, you know, doing what the ordinance, what the governor's putting in place, the county's putting in place, I know everybody's kinda, uh, you know, I'm, I'm still allowed to go to town, still go to town, but I'm staying home more than I've ever stayed, you know, and it's not that bad, you know, when you get, you don't have to get cleaned up and go to town, go out of town to eat, you get to stay home, work another two hours, three hours in the evening, on the weekend, you know, and that, that, that feels pretty good. You know, if you get, get out and do something, you know, get a garden, may have a garden this time, they had one in eight years, but I'm gonna have one this time, so, I just, uh, hope all y'all stay safe, if nobody else has got anything, I need to ask for motion to adjourn, I guess.
I'll make, I'll second it.
All in favor? Uh, good seeing y'all again.
Everybody stay safe.
Yep, same. Yep, same. I'll see you next time. Bye.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.